I call to order the September 29, 2020, Celine County Commission Board of Directors. Would the clerk please take real call?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson? Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Would you all please stand for the flag salute and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a citizens input and citizens may speak on county government, usually limited three minutes, not on today's agenda. Seeing none. The consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as presented. On that consent approval, we have prior minutes, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum. Are there any modifications to the consent agenda by the commission?
Nope.
Seeing none, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. Action items, item one.
RFA 221-20 stadium equipment with Rick Lamer, livestock and expo director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a request for action concerning equipment at Tri Rivers Stadium. December 31, 2020, Celine County will no longer operate or hold a lease on Tri Rivers Stadium. The Tri Rivers Fair Board has requested that the county donate all rodeo equipment, bleachers and fixtures so they can secure lease with the city of Salina and continue fair activities on this site. This would also include trash cans, snack bar fixtures and petting zoo panels. You do have photos in your packet, but this might be a little bit easier to see. Basically, what you're looking at is all the panels, the catwalk, the holding pins, everything that surrounds the arena, including the bleachers, rope and chutes, holding chutes. And this stack of panels is for the petting zoo. And you have the refrigerator and a couple of prep tables in the snack bar. And of course, your trash cans, everything they need to continue the rodeo. Alternatives for action are number one, donate said equipment to Tri Rivers Fair Board, or number two, remove all county property by December 31, 2020, and sell on Purple Wave. Staff recommends donating all equipment to Tri Rivers Fair Board so they can continue fair activities at Tri Rivers Stadium. There is no budget impact.
Okay, are there any comments from the commission at this time?
Is there any work being done by your staff to do this, or is it pretty much just leave in place and it's theirs?
Leave it in place and they take it over.
Very good.
We'll transfer utilities to them on December 31.
Very good.
And I would assume council has reviewed this and legalities and everything's good.
I've sent it to Mike and he didn't have any concerns.
Very good, okay.
Have you any estimation, Rick, of what dollar value you would put all this at?
I really, you know, it's hard to say what we'd get out of it if we put it on Purple Wave. And it's pretty labor intensive to go in and take all that stuff out because a lot of it's all set in concrete.
Okay, is there any public comments?
Norman, out of Salina, that cattle equipment is pretty expensive property. I think if you would sell that, there would be cattle men interested in buying that equipment. That could raise quite a bit of revenue.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we donate said equipment to Tri Rivers Fair Board.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor of RFA 221-20 to donate said equipment to Tri Rivers Fair Board? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item two.
RFA 222-20 up trust service agreement with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning. This is, I mentioned this, I think, last week when I was here. This is the IT program we're going to utilize platform for push out of notifications of court, doctor's appointments, and more for clients. It'll be direct immediate contact between the staff and my office and the client. But we also, in this pilot project, are going to bring CKF in. I'm going to, see, Community Corrections will pay for this first year of services because we want to get CKF and so that CKF can also push out immediate information to the client and my staff instead of waiting two and three days to find out someone hasn't been showing up for programs or that someone showed up under the influence of something. There's a lot of time waiting sometimes because everybody gets busy. This will be set up so that it's an immediate push out. It'll go to phones, emails, it can be done from your phone, from a laptop, from a desktop, all of those kind of things. So we actually have been working on this for almost a year, no, more than a year. I'm not going to, Commissioner Shadwick would tell me it's been a long time coming.
Long time.
Okay, yes. Anyways, we're ready to go. And this contract will allow for the beginning of the period for 12 months, October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2021. Customized software that allow communications with clients via text messages, but like I said, you can do it from phone, laptops, Chromebooks, you name it, desktop services, those kind of things. All that will be downloaded by the client, no cost to them, so there's a win there. And Community Corrections will pay Up Trust $5 per client per month. So we're really not going to pay extra for CKF clients. We're only going to pay for the clients that are of ours that are going to CKF, if that makes sense. So we've got a great deal. They originally would charge a flat fee first just to get started and then this fee. And Bob Stevenson, we've been working with him for over a year, he negotiated a great deal for us, so I'm very pleased. There'll be 24/7 customer support. And also, the application will track all our data that we want to do. So we have certain outcomes that this project has to meet, as I said to you last week. We want to reduce failures to show to court and treatment and those kind of things. We want to reduce failures to not know about clients falling backwards, not knowing those things immediately. But we also know that if we can get those reminders out, all the research tells you in pretrial and drug court information is that there'll be savings of jail bed stays because they'll come to court and warrants won't be issued. So those are the kind of things we're going to track. It has to show those things to me in a year's time that we're reducing recidivism, jail bed stays, and no, not reporting for me to continue this project. So that's where we're at. The good thing is, is that they customize that and that data output will come to me anytime I want it. It'll all just be at my fingertips and I can collect it, which is excellent. So anyway, like I said, we're bringing CKF in because we want to expand this with all our providers if it works, but we're going to start with CKF. So we're very excited. We actually have our training set up by Zoom for tomorrow. This contract has gone back and forth between Up Trust, Bob Stevenson, myself and Mike Montoya. Mike graciously, after I got frustrated, went in and changed some lines and did some of this stuff directly for me. So shout out to Mike. Anyway, so the contract's all gone through everybody that, at this point, needed to look at it. Now it's in front of you to sign today, I hope, because we're going to get trained tomorrow and we'd be ready to roll live on October 1, which is coming up sometime soon.
I'll be surprised if this doesn't help in some way. I mean, I don't think that it's going to be the magic bullet of you and I have talked about, but it'll be definitely a tool in the box.
I think that you're right. We have researched these kind of tools for the last three, four years. Everything that we see is telling us that if you don't have those immediate contacts, especially in pretrial and drug court kind of programs, in the world we're living in now, that's viral, virtual, and everybody has to do those kind of things, the population we serve tend to become overwhelmed, tend to shut down. It's real easy for them. So these notifications, these contacts, the research tells us that it'll make a difference. Yeah, I don't think that in the first year, we're going to reduce it 100%, but I certainly think we can reduce it by, and don't hold me to this, but I think we could see 50% to 60%. And the judges are excited. I think this is just going to be a really good tool and I will be excited to report out to you on a quarterly basis or whatever the outcomes.
Annie, how many contact people, how many clients would be on this system?
Right, okay, so we're starting small because we have over 500 adults and 120 juveniles. We're going to start with all our juveniles and we're going to then do just the drug court and just the pretrial. So our drug court would be about 130 people and pretrial would be about 75 to 85 on any given day because those change on a pretty fluid basis. So that would be, what is it, about 350, 400 maybe at the max? And that's probably a little bit more than it will be. And, oh, I should, I should say this too. I have five staff out of my office and I'm running computers everywhere, so I'm a little bit befuddled. Befuddled? You can use that word. But thanks to the COVID relief funds, that was one of the things that we applied for when I reviewed that with you last week. And so the initial payment will come out of those funds for that until that end of December, so that helped us a lot. I'd already saved and put over those in our reimbursement budget and been planned for this, but those three months of starting October through December are going to come from the COVID relief fund, so that was a real bonus for me. So, and when we got a reduced price, it's a win-win today.
Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the up trust service agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor of RFA 222-20 up trust service agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three.
RFA 222-23-20 for laptops with Kevin Ellis, Community, or Computer Technology.
Good morning, commissioners.
With Computer Technology.
Good morning, commissioners. Celine County Computer Technology is asking for permission to expend $19,669.16 for the purchase of 28 Lenovo E15 laptops with SHI, who had the low quote for the project. The laptops were requested through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The laptops will be used by various county departments to enable remote connectivity to Celine County network. The district court requested 20, the county clerk requested two, Roden Bridge Department requested two, and Health Department requested four to be used in a learning lab for children. The quotes for this purchase were from ISG Tech. They quoted a Dell Latitude 5,000 at $1,659.70 each for a total of $46,456.76. CDWG quoted the Lenovo E15 at $851.17 each for a total of $23,832.76. SHI quoted the Lenovo E15 at $702.47 for a total of $19,669.16. Your alternatives for action are to approve the, as presented, deny the request, or send staff back for more research. Staff recommends approval of this request. The departments listed will be able to connect to the county network remotely in order to conduct county business in case of Coronavirus quarantines are mandated. The impact of the budget would be that funded through the Coronavirus Relief Funds, the total requested for this project was $27,224 and will be spending $19,669.16 for this purchase. That will leave a balance of $7,554.84. Okay, thank you. Annie?
I have a quick question. I noticed that the different departments that made the request, we've had other departments that are doing remote now that aren't on this list. Does this all go into a pool where any department could pull from it, or do they, are they actually dedicated to the ones listed?
So I can answer that question, Commissioner. So these were the departments that had requested specific work specifically for their department. However, I actually learned last week that our emergency management director was afforded a grant opportunity through the state that her intent is to come before you next week for the purchase of a cache of laptops that could be used to be checked out by any department at any time.
Thank you, Hannah.
You're welcome.
Any idea why there's such a big spread between the three different bids?
Well, usually what you get, especially like between the Dell and Lenovo, Dells were always higher priced, you know, that I can tell you, you know, because you can get a wide range. If we'd have just throwed out, okay, we needed 28 laptops, we'd have had a price range from 400 bucks to 2,000. But you have to get down to specifics, things that this can handle, because not just any computer would be able to handle the fact of doing remote work. Okay, so we set out the specifics. And then a lot of it just comes down to what they can get availability, you know, like Walmart sells their things cheaper because they can buy a good quantity of them. And a lot of it comes down to that kind of thing.
Gotcha. Thank you. And do these all come loaded with operating system, or do we have to use, purchase more operating systems down the road?
No, they will come with operating systems. Now, as far as our VDI stuff, yes, we have to supply that, that Horizon client that we use.
Gotcha.
So we have to have the licensing for that, but.
Okay. Any, any comments from the public? Bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of 28 laptops as presented.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second on RFA 223-20 laptops. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
RFA 224-20, the WIC annual grant contract approval with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. So the first thing here we have is the WIC grant contract. This is an annual renewal. The contract for this year, the grant amount is $264,269 for the period of October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021. This covers the complete costs of the program for providing WIC services to Celine County. And as far as the administration, operation, and personnel cost, alternatives for action, of course, as always, you can either refuse the grant and not sign, send us back for more information, or sign the grant contract. We recommend signing the contract so that we can continue providing WIC services to Celine County residents. Of course, as far as budget impact, if the contract is not signed, then of course, the impact of the budget will be a loss of that grant revenue as well as personnel who provide those services.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the commissioner?
Couple questions, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Does Celine County, their WIC program, do we, do we oversee any other county's WIC program or just Celine County's alone?
We don't oversee another county, but we do have a memorandum of understanding where we provide dietitian services to Ellsworth Health Department for their WIC clients twice a month.
Do they also apply for a WIC grant to subsidize that?
They do. Our cost for that WIC time that is spent over in Ellsworth on those two Fridays is just staff time. It doesn't include any travel because our WIC dietitian lives in Ellsworth. And so, and then Ellsworth also has a, I think, a WIC clerk and another non-dietitian WIC staff, so they apply for WIC funding for those staff.
Are we compensated for those?
For those hours, yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's where I was leaving.
Yeah, since we are, the only cost to us for those two days where we're providing that WIC time to Ellsworth is salary time, that is compensated in our WIC grant.
Any other comments from the commissioner? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the annual WIC grant contract.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor of RFA 224-20 WIC annual grant contract? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number five.
RFA 225-20 ELC COVID-19 Expanded Testing Grant with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning again, Jason.
Good morning again. So before you right now, we have the epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant for COVID-19 expanded testing. We have received $133,500 for this, through this grant. These funds will be used to support additional testing for COVID-19 in the community as this pandemic wears on. The nice thing about this grant is that we have this grant, we have until November 2022 to expend the funds for this grant. So we are working on some additional strategies as we move further into this pandemic because it's not going to be done in the next 30 to 60 days with Salina Regional and Salina Family. So we are not planning to expend the funds right away, but we want to be able to keep these funds in reserve since we have a longer period of time on this grant in order to use them, to be able to focus on using them later on for either uninsured, underinsured, homeless, some of those types of populations. Alternatives for action, of course, to refuse the grant, not sign, send me back for more information, or sign the grant contract. We recommend signing the contract, so this will allow us to provide more testing in conjunction with partners in the community for COVID-19. As far as budget impact, if this grant is not accepted, then future testing, at least from this perspective, will not be able to happen, at least not from, from us.
And I just want to make one comment here. Apologize, I didn't catch this earlier, but on the item five on your, our agenda, it calls for the RFA 225-20, but on the county commission request for action is 225-60. And I just, I just now noticed that. It is 225-20? Okay. All right. Any other comments by the commissioners?
What does this mean to a Celine County citizen today that wants to be tested? I mean, is this something available immediately?
Not immediately, at least not with these funds. So right now, we still recommend testing for those that have, are symptomatic. We continue to recommend that they contact their primary care provider to discuss their symptoms, especially since many of the COVID symptoms can mimic other things, to ensure that not only if they need to be tested for COVID, that they are treated for whatever might actually be going on if the physician determines that it's not COVID. Right now, we are looking at being able to use a lot of this for some mobile testing options down the road or testing clinics, but we're just not at that point yet to be able to do that.
Are we still, is it Celine County or the hospital that's requiring a doctor's approval to get tested first?
That is, so if you are seeing your primary care, then it's through that. There are some places that you can go, I believe, and get a test without having a doctor's order, but they are very few in between. And I think there's a couple of them within maybe hour and a half drive from here. You can get it without a doctor's order, but the caveat to that is you have to pay out of pocket for it.
Okay.
And they can run anywhere from $100 or more to get that test done.
Okay, and this money wouldn't cover that then?
No, what this will cover, so part of what I had written in here was to be able to do testing for 2% of the population, which is about 1,100 people or 1,100 tests. So it's not a ton, which is why we want to be a little bit more strategic about how we use it in conversation with Salina Family and Salina Regional. They've got some current plans that they're working on for either equipment or additional testing. And given the, the staff staff, when you try to do a mobile testing site, the staff stress and the number of staff that it takes, we're talking about doing something in a joint manner so that it's not, the full burden doesn't fall onto just the Health Department, or just Salina Regional, or just Salina Family, but that we can be able to share that burden of staffing as well as, as with resources to be able to conduct that. And that's still just high, our kind of high level...
To follow up on Commissioner Shadwick's question, I know in Riley County, you can, you can get a request, a test with no doctors, and there's no cost to it. How is Riley County able to provide that service, and we can't do that here in Saline County?
Is that through the county health department, or?
That, I'm not sure. I believe it is the county health. You might look into that. I know they, they have testing a couple times a week where people can just request the COVID test.
That would be of interest to me, is if, I think I kind of mentioned that last week, is, you know, what, is there something more that we could be doing as a commission to help fund it even, and expedite this testing? So that's a, I'm interested that Riley County does that. That's...
Now, I know that in some of the testing things that have gone on like that, it's still though the same criteria. You still have to be symptomatic, you still have to meet those screenings. So, but I'll have to look into that one a little bit more. I know I've heard about them doing it, I'm just not sure how they're paying for it right now. Whether they're using some grant funds they have received, private endowment, I'm not sure yet. So I'll look into that one some more.
Can you follow up a little bit on what the Governor announced yesterday and what that means to Saline County?
I missed her press conference yesterday, so...
She had mentioned that some more money is available in test, for testing, and I didn't know how that would flow down to us, or, or whatnot.
I'll have to look into that. Like I said, I missed her press conference quite often. That information comes out in those forums, and we hear about it at the same time, so I'll have to find out some more information on that one, too.
Any other comments by the Commissioners? Any comments from the public? Hearing that, I'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the ELC COVID-19 Expanded Testing Grant as recommended by staff.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second for approving RFA-225-20, ELC COVID-19 Expanded Testing Grant. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I forgot to ask one question. Is this a state grant or a federal grant?
I think this one is coming down through federal channels, but through the state.
Okay.
Yeah, it's coming, I think, from the feds down through the state, right, to us.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Jason.
Thank you.
Item six.
RFA 226-20, Voting Delegation for KAC Meeting with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip. You're on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So the first action item for the commission this morning is to delegate three of your members to represent the commission at the annual board meeting of the Kansas Association of Counties. This is something that we do every year, but this year, everything is just a little bit unusual, so it's probably a little more important than normal to have the alternate folks named. KAC has sent out their requests, and so I am bringing this item to you, just as Marilyn Lehmer previously brought the K work appointment to you as well. The virtual meeting of KAC will take place this year on October 14th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. One question is, during this, is this a, where a person should attend this the whole day, or just during the portion of voting?
So this is actually only for the business meeting. Of course, I think KAC would encourage folks to attend for the entire day because they, you know, want to show off their programs, but this is particular for the business meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by the Commissioners?
Have we decided who this is going to be? Can't remember. I thought I was going to be an alternate.
And I thought I was the voter, but that was for that K work, wasn't it?
Oh, that's different. Okay. Well, I'd be happy to be whatever, so...
And I'll be a, I'll be an alternate, or a delegate, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Rogers, you're the real thing, and we're the alternate.
Okay. That sounds good to me, okay. I'd be more than happy to play that.
Do we need a, do we need a motion, or?
Yes.
An action on that?
There is a proposed motion for the commission. I don't think you probably technically need a motion, as long as you're willing to sign off on the form and the, and the clerk attests it, but there is a motion that's proposed.
Sorry, I see that now.
Sign it.
Sign it.
Sign it. Looks good. Okay. Item six is taken care of. Item seven.
RFA 227-20, Resolution 20-2306, Establish Public Building Commission Board with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Philip.
Good morning. So items seven and eight are companion items regarding our continuing quest to fund the installation of the new radio system. The county commission previously approved staff bringing back an item to form a public building commission for the purpose of issuing bonds for that radio system, and then the county would enter into a lease with that public building commission. So the first resolution before you, in item seven this morning, establishes the actual public building commission. It's pretty straightforward, be happy to answer questions about it. The one thing that I will point out to the commission is the timeline associated with this. In order to actually get the cash for the radio system in January, we'll need to keep this moving. So would ask that not only the commission establish the public building commission today by passing Resolution 20-2306, but also that you be thinking of who your appointment would be, so that we could make those appointments next Tuesday, and that public building commission would be able to meet the week of Columbus Day to kick off this process.
Okay. Any comments from the Commissioners? Any comments from the public? No comments. I'll bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2036 as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 20-2306, Establish Public Building Commission Board. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Is Resolution 20-2307, Issue of Revenue Bonds with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, this is a companion item to your previous item. This resolution would actually be a request to the newly formed Public Building Commission to issue revenue bonds for the radio system. So once the, obviously the Public Building Commission is now formed, per your prior action, once the appointments are made, and they have their first meeting, we would present to them this resolution, if you pass it today, which would be the formal request to actually issue the bonds for this purpose, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions?
Not for me.
And the public? Okay, bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2037 as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
Any further comments? All in favor of RFA Resolution 20-2307, Issue of Revenue Bonds? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Informational item. Item one.
Is a Road Vacation of Nell's Road with Jamie Doss, County Clerk. I actually have three road vacations to present today. The first one is a request for a road vacation for South Nell's Road between Tinkler Road and Assaria Road. The petitioner is Michael Jensen. He leases the land from Justin Reynolds. We have talked with Road and Bridge. There were no issues, no bridge structures out there. Currently, the road is closed. The requestor is asking the road be closed because they need access to their farm ground, because this is out by the, the shooting sports. So they are asking for that.
And if, if we have no problem with it today, which I'm not saying one way or another, but then the next step, remind me again what that is?
Then we will put together an RFA and a resolution. We will send out certified letters to all of the adjacent landowners, letting them know this is going to come before you. We will then also have to put it in the paper, that there will be a hearing on this, and then we'll bring it back for you for action.
One question to make sure I got this right. Who is, who is requesting this action?
Michael Jensen.
Is he a landowner?
He actually leases the land from Justin Reynolds, so he actually farms the land there.
He, he farms it for who?
Justin Reynolds.
I don't see him on the landowner's list.
I'm assuming that's for John.
John.
Yeah, for John Reynolds.
John Reynolds?
Yeah.
Okay.
And all of these other landowners?
We're required to let the adjacent landowners know that this is coming before you, so that they can, they can say if they're for or against it.
Okay.
So we notify everyone that is adjacent to that property, or to that road.
It might be a small item, but wouldn't this action have to come from a landowner and not from a tenant?
Not necessarily. We have several of them that, we have the ones that farm it, that do it for the landowner, so...
But the landowner obviously needs, is going to be contacted, I hope.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I get what you're saying. I didn't know that a tenant can do that, but if he's doing it on behalf of the landowner, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we send it out to, obviously, the petitioner, we send it to the landowner, and we send it to all of the adjacent landowners, the information.
So just if we pass this along today, that does not mean that we're saying okay?
No. That just means to move forward with the publication, and the notification, and putting together the resolution for action, and the RFA.
I should know that. I just need to be reminded every once in a while, but...
This is the start of the statutory requirement, so...
Correct. And is this type of road closure, is this the one where they put the gates up at the end of both ends, where the landowners still can get into there, to get into their properties?
Oh, she's been, Tammy has actually been talking with Darren directly, and he didn't say. He just said the road's closed, and it's far down on their list for repairs or anything, so I don't, I'm assuming the barricades are up there.
And I know that this road was just in the last, I know, three years, or maybe even a couple of years, that was brought in front of us with these landowners, wanting us to gravel that road. And, and it's not been that long since we've been in commission, that, that they, those landowners brought that in front of us to gravel this road. And I, I know at that time, there was concern with the fire department, real fire districts, about getting from point A to B.
We actually have not heard back from the emergency responders at all yet at this point, so...
Okay. I just...
But we will make sure that we do before, it comes before you for action.
Okay. All right.
I'm okay with moving forward if, like Commissioner White said, this is just the start of the process, so...
Okay. I'd say, also, listen...
Yeah, this is kind of like what we used to do in our study sessions, so...
I'm good with it. That's fine.
So item number two is the, the road vacation for West Schelling Road. This is the one, actually, I presented to you before, for, that was requested by Joel Weimer. He actually decided to put it on hold about the time when COVID started, and then brought, amended it, and now I'm bringing it back to you, because he's only going to do a portion of what he initially requested to close. And obviously, this is that portion that was never improved. He's wanting to eliminate that access so that they could build a fence.
So basically, it's the same request, nothing's changed?
He, he shortened the area that he wanted, but, I mean, that was back to the, oh, go back to that first screen.
In our packet, Jamie, oh, there it is. Okay, because we didn't get the map, I just got the numbers.
Oh, yeah, we noticed that, actually, when I was on the, the website, looking at what they had posted on there, we sent them the map, but for some reason, it didn't come across on the, on what they had scanned in, so...
Put that back up, Kevin. The overlay of the landowners.
There you go.
Thank you.
So he did amend it a little bit, but...
And, and the reason, again, is for, for a fence to be erected along that portion?
Yeah, and that, that portion of that road was never improved upon, but he wants to close it to be able to build a fence there.
Goes back to just information, again. I don't see any reason why not to go forward, and we can hear from landowners and...
Agreed.
Agreed, agreed.
Item number three, technically, this is South Old 81, but it's on your information, it's South 9th Street. But this is in front of Dower Implement Company. It's, the petitioner is Stephen Dower. This is actually frontage road at the Comerford Track Edition, sorry. So this is a part of a frontage road that was never created, I mean, it was never improved on, so it's just a portion of those tracks that they're requesting being vacated, so that they can eventually be able to sell parts of those, part of those lots. Road and Bridge said there was no issues. We haven't heard from the first responders. The utilities, there was no conflict on any of those.
Does the city of Salina need to be notified of this, as potential future development for them?
We have not reached out to the city, but that's something that we can do prior to coming before you for action.
It's within the one mile.
That's, I guess, maybe my point. You're right, Commissioner, yeah. And that seems to be where things are moving, and they do like their frontage roads, so I just...
Yeah, I'll reach out to them before we even put it out in the paper and all that, just to make sure that it's not something that we need to do more before we do that, so...
Okay.
The cost of publication lies upon the county?
Mm-hmm.
And those run, how much?
It depends. I'd say, when we do a road vacation, we easily spend somewhere between, total of everything, about probably $350 for everything. By the time you do the letters, the initial publication for the hearing, and then, and then we put it in... then we put it in there, once it's been voted on and approved, we put it in the paper again, so.
I don't know. Food for thought, or something we might discuss at some later date is, if we're not making that request, if a landowner or something is making that request, maybe they should incur the cost of that?
I know there's, one of our codes or, that we have, that was, I think, brought in back in the 80s, I want to say, I can't remember, is, it used to be that you submitted a petition signed by the adjacent, by the adjacent landowners, and that you would pay $30. That hasn't been updated for a really long time. I can't tell you, in the 20 years I've been here, that anyone's paid that $30. I've, I have given it to Phil when he started, that that's something that maybe we need to look into, reviewing that policy, so.
Any other thoughts or comments from the commission?
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. Move forward with it then. Thank you, Jamie. Item four.
This county administrator's update.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again. So three items to update the commissioners and the public about this morning. First, just an update on the status with the coronavirus relief fund. This morning, in accounts payable, your commission approved $153,243.03 to outside agencies. We do have four additional requests that are pending, they've been submitted, but we're waiting on more information before processing those payments. In addition, there was $7,718.65 in payments for the county's direct aid, and $5,136.60 for the community corrections program. That brings our total expended so far to just over 2.2 million, or 20% of the total of what we received from the state. We have our next advisory committee meeting tomorrow. We finally received some guidance from the state on how to process plan changes, so we can review requests with the advisory committee, and bring those in front of your commission hopefully next Tuesday. The Chamber Foundation application goes live this Thursday, and also on Thursday, we will be meeting with the technical advisor from the state that's been assigned to our region to answer some additional questions. We will not be processing payables for the CRF funds next week, because we have our first report due to the state next Wednesday, and in looking through the state reporting template, that's going to require pretty much all of the work of staff over the next week, so. That is where we are with CRF. The second item, as the commission is aware, I was away from the office for a big chunk of last week, attending the ICE CMA Annual Conference, which this year, of course, is held virtually. I always like to report on some of the things that you're getting for your money when you send me off to conferences like this, and so I'll just mention four in particular. One was, there was a lot of talk about the barriers that keep people from participating in different community things, such as this meeting, or job interviews. I know one of the problems that we've experienced in Celine County is a lot of no-shows for job interviews, so I'll be taking some of those ideas that I gained from the conference, and having conversation with Marilyn Lemar about what we can do on that. A second key idea was ideas for how to appreciate our employees during this time of pandemic, especially the employees of the Health Department. Got a number of good suggestions, I think we can implement a few of those. Third was also related to pandemic mitigation, and the idea of opportunities for outdoor work. As we know, the sunlight and the airflow tends to reduce virus transmission, so have brought that up with the folks from the Building Authority, because there's some room for discussion of that in terms of the new master plan for the Building Authority. And the final idea I'll mention is a new idea around how to make time for long-range planning. That's an idea that I'll be presenting to the department heads at our next executive team meeting. So just a sample of some of the things that, that I got out of that conference. Appreciate the opportunity to attend that. And finally, for today, I wanted to mention the commission on August 25th authorized rebuild of a transmission on a 1997 Caterpillar 140H grader. Although the motion did not specify the dollar amount, it was clear from the context of the commission's discussion that you were expecting that to come in around $24,800 in cost. And Darren Fischel has reported to me, and I felt like it was important to mention to you, that after Caterpillar received the machine and started into it, they've come back with a quote that is approximately 50% higher than that figure. So Darren has investigated a number of alternatives, all the way from just getting it back in running condition to a complete rebuild. He does still recommend the transmission rebuild only as the most cost-effective option, given all of the different things that he's looked at. So we will be proceeding with that unless the commission tells us not to, but I just wanted to mention that, because it will be, like I said, about one and a half times what we originally told you it would be. So that is all I have for today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions on what you just presented, but I do have a question about the coronavirus relief money that we gave to the chamber in a lump sum. Will that come back to us as a vote for the, how they distribute it, or have we just given it to them to distribute as they see fit?
So it's, you approved not only the distribution to them, but you also approved their plan. We brought that back to you for how they're planning to distribute it. So it's based on the revenue loss, which is modeled on the same program that the state is doing through the Department of Commerce. So I am going to be having a conversation with Eric Brown this afternoon, because I've heard a lot of talk in the community since we did that, folks saying that that revenue loss does not necessarily fit local conditions here in Celine County, particularly for some of the downtown Salina businesses, because of the work on Santa Fe that was going on in 2019. So we're going to continue to evaluate options, but no, to answer your question, the individual dispersments to businesses will not be coming back in front of the commission at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by commissioners?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Any announcements? Seeing none? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, Chair.